Follow the meeting to order. We have all board members present this evening. 3.0 is to approve the agenda. Many additions, subtractions, corrections to the agenda in front of you. Barry Nunn will take a motion to approve as presented.
So move.
Motion by Scott. Second by Danny. In favor. All right, we'll move on to the discussion related to the improvement slash tennis court facilities and also the future of the boys' and girls' tennis programs.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everyone. If you haven't, we do have four or five extra copies of agendas here. Or at least parts of agendas, and if you don't have one already. I appreciate everybody getting back. We had the opportunity to visit with, I think, members of the board back in November. And we promised at that time that we were going to look into some of the options that would be available because our tennis courts are getting to be in disrepair. And that's why we gathered here tonight. And then we also have to address in one way, shape, or form what we're going to, how we're going to deal with our facilities and potentially the program. And so the whole idea is to share with you what we've learned. And then the school board might have questions, or certainly you might as well. So if you do have the agenda, I would like to, this is online, but I would like you to look at the background information. And I want to share right out of the gate that this is just my summary of all the work that's been done. So this isn't like factual, it's a little recording this, but it's pretty close to exactly what's been done since we met before. And the reason I share that is I want you to know that we've taken it pretty seriously, the idea of doing some research. I also want to publicly say, Val Helverson, who's our city administrator in Madison, because several of us met with Val on different occasions to discuss an option that I'll get to a little bit later. And I don't want to miss any of that. With us tonight also, in terms of the meeting, in terms of folks that have been with me on part of these things, is Tony Smith, he's our activities director, he's in the back room. And I also want to introduce Scott Vandermilen, he's going, he's our community head director and going to be activities director, we're going to make that transition this summer. So with that in mind, as I've written here, and you get a chance to look at it at your leisure, it's been agreed that the administration needs to explore some options and see if, subsequent meeting, if there are ways that we can, or how to move forward, try to determine how to move forward instead of sitting around back at home tonight and just making arbitrary decisions. So we did look at some information that, I don't know, maybe y'all think about this, I don't know for sure if the board thinks about this, but I think that it tells a little bit of a story. If we go back to when the tennis courts were first constructed, it's going to be in the early 90s, I think. I don't know if it was the first year we were in the building or not, but it was some time ago. And at that time, we had about 1,400 kids in our school district, attending school here. In fact, the actual numbers in 1994, 95 in our elementary schools were about 709 kids, and we had 712 kids in our second, in our 7th through 12th grade program. So fast forward to today, and we have around 333 kids in our high school. And of those kids, we have about 84 kids who are culturally or linguistically enrolled in our district but don't necessarily participate in our activities. So one of the things that's happening, or at least on a regular basis, but at least one of the things that are happening is even though we show we have, you know, over 300 students, now this is just Lack of Parle, this is not coming to us. We really have around 240 or so kids. And half of them are boys, half are girls, let's say, that regularly participate in something. But that's very different than having a student count to 700 kids. I think we have the same number of activities today that we did when we opened this place in the early 90s. So even though our numbers are quite different, we're still acting like we have the same number in terms of the total number of activities that we're offering. When we look at our, the forecast or the census going forward, what we're seeing is a little bit of growth, but it's mostly in our culturally linguistic community. So we're actually up as a school district about 10 kids from the beginning of the year, which is kind of the opposite where we've been in the not-too-distant past. But we're not necessarily growing as a school district with kids that are participating in these activities. And that matters. When we look at our two, and I'm doing this so everybody's kind of on the same page tonight because I think that's pretty important. We might want one thing or another, but we also need to take the time to make sure we recognize here's where we're actually at today. So now these numbers are maybe going to be off one, maybe two, but our best guess is that as far as our participation in our boys' program, we have, we think we're going to have 17 kids this spring. 16 of them, we think, are going to be from Dawson. And we've got one student that's signed up that's not played before. In the girls', we think we're going to have around 23 to 25 kids. And 13 of them are from Lack of Parle School District, 10 from Dawson. And I want you to know that I have met with Tony many times. I met with Brandt once. I met with Val Helverson two or three times, and I'll get to why there. But I also want to make sure that I made a reference here on all the things that I've been learning as we go through this, but I'm not sure all these people were at the meeting. Okay, so we were there for bits and pieces of things, but I'm making a report tonight from my perspective. So as an example, on the next page, I write that I was in a meeting, well, we can actually turn to that. But before you do though, I also wanted to make sure you know that we did look at, how often have we been fixing the courts, or how often do we have? And I don't know what year exactly the courts were built, but in 2003, 2004, we were able to validate that we spent the amount of money shown there, around $260,000, to resurface the tennis courts and the track. And I couldn't find how much we spent on either of them, but it's about $250,000, $60,000. And then 13 years later, and I thought that was kind of ironic that that, if we built the courts in 2000, or in 1990, the first year we were in this building, 13 years later, we did some work on them. And then 13 years after that, it looks like they resurfaced the tennis courts at a cost of around $52,000. And the people that did the work, or the firms that did the work are listed here. On the next page, there's a chronology of the background, and this is just so you could know and I could share. These are the times we've tried to meet, or we've actually done some, had some, or interaction since November 9. And essentially, you'll think back that we had old architects and engineers come into the district and look at three different, well, of all of our outside facilities. And they gave us some estimates of what it would cost to redo our tennis courts, to redo our track, and to look at doing some things with the baseball field. And the reason we were doing that is because we got to get into reality here. There hasn't been some things done for a while, but we do need some work in all these different, of these different facilities. And it's not like we reach in our pocket and grab $20,000 and take care of it. It's pretty good-sized money all across the board. Then we met as a group here, a lot of you were here with us on November 9. And at that time, it wasn't the whole board. It was our activities committee and our facilities committee, so not all of the board was here that particular night. And then again, on November 16, there was a meeting that the city of Madison had with their, I think it was, if I get this right, it was their park and rec committee. And that ended up being a public meeting because I had two board members that I asked to attend, Mr. Berkey and Mr. Carpey. We also met with the park and rec committee from Madison because I had heard through the grapevine, really, there was no invite or anything, but I'd asked, or I heard that they were thinking, the city of Madison was thinking about a tennis court project. And they are, and they were looking at building two courts and I think a basketball surface. And I asked on behalf of the school district, what would be the chances of us meeting with you to see, are there opportunities possibly to make that collaborative kind of a project? Where we build five, six, or seven courts? And so we were able to do that at that time. And then I'm guessing that January 27 was kind of a snow day, and nothing else to do, so four or five of us got together to talk about what are some options? And we called Dr. Hacker, asked if he could attend, Val Helverson was there, I was there, and Tony Smith was there. And this is the part I'm referring. We didn't talk about all these things with everybody there, but we did talk about all these things that day. And what we were trying to learn about was the city's project is something that's moving. And when we first talked, it was, oh, this is something that's going to happen pretty soon. How much money would it take, you know, is it even a possibility? We'd heard all kinds of, there were questions of, well, could the school district, as long as you're part of the, you know, these are minutes, could we join together? We're looking at options, and none of us really knew the answers up at that particular time. So we had several conversations, all related to the things that I showed you in bullet points there. But Brandt was only there to discuss, you know, where are we at with the program in terms of numbers? And just for me mostly, to get more history of what was going on. Is that fair, you think, Brandt? Okay. Then on February 27, I asked the school board, I said, we really need to get back with our, the people we met with before. They agreed to schedule a meeting because we need their authority to do that, and then we're here tonight. I don't have a better way to frame this, so I'm the author of that next section also, which, what I'm trying to do is get us to move to a point where we make some decisions. Because it's been four or five months since we met before, and we need to decide, what are we going to do? If it's work on the courts, if it's make a decision to work together with the city of Madison? And, or is it that we work with the city of Madison and a group that might help us raise some money? Or is it that, you know, none of those are options, we need to make a, some decisions on how we move forward with the actual programs? So that's kind of the history of where we're at. And now I'd like you to grab that, one of those other documents that I hope you were able to pick up. But actually, I commend Val, and she's been a great source of information because they're doing this project already, Val Helverson. Val, where are you? Okay. If, I don't know if you want, but if you wouldn't mind just joining me here in case there are questions. I don't want to put you on the spot. But first of all, it's important that if we're going to do this project, if they would have done this, you know, in the 1990s, I'm not sure they put it right where they did, because it was a lot of moisture out here. I'm not sure of what the construction was underneath those, but most everybody understands when you get a situation where you're putting asphalt down, you have to have a decent base. And everything that I've ever known about tennis courts, and I've only built two courts and been part of projects, was we had like a four or five-foot base of sand beneath the courts. And when you do it right, it seems like it's a good long-term position. And I've always been one that says, if we're going to do this, let's do it right so the people down the road that we might never live to see will look back and say, you know, they really did this well, and we're going to have to maintain them and we saw. So those are the kind of projects that I've been talking to the board about. If we do something, I think we need to be thinking about that. And that's certainly what the city of Madison is doing because they've been exploring two different kinds of courts, asphalt and post-tension concrete. And one is much more expensive than the other, but one is much better, easier to take care of. And the maintenance costs over the years are much less. So you either pay upfront, or you pay as you go. And I don't need to read through this unless you've got a time limit, Val. It's just some options that we're looking at. On the next couple pages, I want to, I am not misleading you at all, but pages three and four, Val has been working closely with the USTA.
Ah, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And so I'm going to say we've talked a half dozen times in the last month or two. And almost every time we do, the prices or what we learned are changing or something. So when you look at this, it's my intent that I gave you all of this, but you'll see different numbers, you know, as you go on. And that's not to deceive anybody, that's to just very honestly say, we're learning more about doing this right. And so, and every time we do, Val's way of saying this is, oh, I had to sit down to get that information because it's more and more, just prices come up as we hold on here. We don't have to spend a lot of time looking at that, but if we just take the page three, would you like to just walk it through?
Sure, I can. So this is, this was working with USTA, it's part of their grant process, that's not another sources besides the DNR. To go, to get, to be eligible for their grant, you have to work through their technical report, which helps you work on the schematic design and that layout that you'll see, which is on page five. And you can see all the complications on that course. But so these are just preliminary, I mean, the first full round of that, so you'll see some things that, you know, some extra seating that you certainly can eliminate. One of the things, they did have also on here is seven lit courts, and you know that we don't have seven lit courts. Some of those costs can be reduced. I don't want to like give you any false hope, but it is still expensive. So that would just shave off probably a couple of thousand dollars. But we're still looking at, and then they also are assuming 30% contingency in today's world. That would be pretty realistic. So it is more than we initially had thought. When you look at where this site is going to be located, the additional build from all that park, it is a very low area, so there will be a lot of extra costs in building that area up and then building the bases, break as possible. You know, that would be probably some tree removals, a lot of drainage that would be needed. So it's more than just laying down the courts, and I think that's what Rick is trying to explain. And that's what you see in these prices, just those costs and services are just unpredictable. We don't know until you get there, just like any sort of model, so.
So I really learned a lot and appreciated Val's sharing on all of that. The other document that I'd like to make sure hopefully you'll be able to look at sort of clears the error on what we can't do as a school district. And school districts are animals of the state of Minnesota. We have to follow all the statutory laws that are related to how to operate a school. And this first page is a legal opinion that I just actually shared with the board, I think it was yesterday, because, but it does clarify some things. So if we were just thinking about doing anything out here on this site, we really don't need this. But a question might be, since we co-op with Dawson, is there a way that we can share the expenses of whatever we're going to do? And I, and I've only been here for a couple of years, but in the past, what I've heard was that somebody had an opinion, and it was, the answer is no. Okay, but that's not accurate. And like, and I was part of a project a few years ago with the city of Redwood Falls in the Redwood Falls School District, and we're made up of, at that time, of Bellevue and Morton and some surrounding schools. So we had taxpayer dollars from all over, and as long as you had, as we had a joint powers agreement, like we could be working together across the board and do things collaboratively that happened to make sense to most taxpayers, you know, working together. And so we were able to do, to work together, and a lot of those projects there were joint projects. But I want to share that, so this is not only for this, our school district, but this would be for Dawson's also. Okay? Because I was led to believe that there, somebody gave an opinion a while ago that the two districts couldn't spend money on each other's facilities or with a entity outside of a city or the school district itself. And you'll see the law firm that we used, and I asked for the opinion to be in writing so it could be shared, and that's what you see in front of you. But it actually says, the school district has the legal authority to enter into an agreement with the city regarding the use and improvement of tennis courts located on city-owned property. And that can happen under a joint powers agreement. And then it goes on, and I'm not going to read the rest of it, but there are no real limitations to how much we could share as long as there was a joint powers agreement that said, here's how we go about sharing it. And then we would be, and Val introduced this to us at one of the earlier meetings that we were at, but we would have to have a joint powers agreement that identifies things like, how will we take care of things over the years? And who actually owns this? And when do we get to have it for our disposal, you know, so we can do our thing with tennis teams or whatever? So all the terms and conditions have to be identified. And so this is current, and it changes some things because we could work with Dawson, or we could work with any other school district, as an example, and share expenses or share whatever's going on in a way that not only deals with the program, but also deals with the facilities. It's just got to be spelled out. And like I say, this came to me at my request, so I could have it for this meeting, just in the last week. The other, the next page, I'm going to ask, but these are, I'm going to ask Val to just feed to you. But this is an example of what I'm saying, we thought we had some numbers down, and then the more we learn, the numbers grew. And if you learn, okay, sharing. And then also, if you could just touch on the two-phase idea, where, sorry.
So yeah, I sent this email update to Rick today, just kind of in frustration that it's really hard to nail down numbers and say, okay, if we're going to do this project, this is the price tag. It's just moving parts and not knowing what's going on. So what that is going to do is also increasing the cost of the city project, which was going to be the base project. The DNR grant has a maximum of $350,000, and it's a 50-50 match. So when we first began talking, our project, the city-only project, was going to be $500,000, leaving $100,000 still on the table for us to leverage to apply to this school portion. Well, with increasing costs, just the city-only project is pushing up to that upper threshold of 700, and therefore there isn't any of that leveraged DNR funds that can be applied to the school, kind of increasing that cost for the school. So that's why it's just really hard to pinpoint what that cost, because I did try my best to kind of lay it out there. The reason, the, so that, my best guess on the 2024 build, meaning we make an application to the DNR and the USTA as one large project, what those dollar amounts look like for like additional four courts? And then I'm not, I just assumed here, we had talked about just throwing a number out for the school of $200,000. So that's how we came up with the $835,000 would be needed if it was going to be a one-time bill in 2024. And then if we wanted to phase it, we can't phase it one year after the next because when you have an open grant, you usually can't apply for another one. And I also clarified with USTA that you need two years between another application. But if it's phased, you could, then the city can still apply for a DNR grant. And grants are competitive, so you can't even, you know, it's not like a guarantee. So this is all just green world kind of right now, but certainly a plan. We could pull down for the additional school courts, just assuming you would, just, I'll start with four. So we would have six total. You could pull down the $350,000 from DNR if we're competitive. And then also because you're building four courts, USTA would have about $50,000. And you're pulling down a little bit more money, but you're drawing out your timeline, and there's, we will see if our grant is competitive on the pre-application, and we are addressing that it could be a phased project. If we get good response, that certainly will give us an appetite, or see what their appetite is for that kind of a project. But, so that's how we're, I'm coming up with these numbers. And then you'll see the phased project would be 2026 build, throwing out a 20% increase for three years of unknowns. And then that leaves a gap that the school is going to commit $200,000 of, $560,000 to $780,000 for private donors. So, oh, sorry, no, it's $630,000, that was the gap, the project total was 560 to 79. And then, you know, that, just kind of the elephant in the room, the city project depends on fundraising as well. Just, you know, just it usually gets the community involved, and I think that there is potential out there for some dollars from people that have a commitment to tennis and just out where wrecking the communities. But if we went on a joint project, we would have to look at the fundraising jointly to, you know, we can't say, okay, the first $100,000 is, you know, when we're hitting up the same people, we need to work together on that. So that would certainly be a commitment from school administration, community, and the city. So it does kind of add a little, a little, I don't know, it could be difficult. And then how do you address it if you want to go forward on a project? You've applied for a grant, and they expect that the project is what you applied for. If there's a shortfall, how do you address those shortfalls if there's any fundraising? You know, we have to be, understand that we would have to share that based on the percentage of courts that each would be kind of responsible for.
So if you flip to the next page in the brochure, this was Val's initial document that I've taken several times, but it kind of identifies what the layout would be, or how we would go about doing a project if, if that's what the board decided to do. And you can see the phase one that she's talking about, that would be the city piece. That would be, right now, there's a target of, was it March 27, I think, or if you have some data pre, when do you have to do your pre-application?
We'll submit that on Thursday. And it doesn't need to be perfect, just, they'll just give us some feedback as far as the elements, the narratives. And then the final application is due on March 31.
And then you can see on the right side, where it says phase two, that would be the 2026 build. And depending on how many courts we build, if we were to even do this project, you can see the layout there. And I identified with no board authority in among the $200,000 that the school district would commit to a project like this. And then we would need help, and we would get quite a bit of help from the DNR and the USTA in two years after the first project was approved. And we would need help from the private sector to address the size of the courts, the number of courts, if we were to go this route. Now, we've spent a lot of time talking about this is a project that we could do with the city. And when you look at the agenda item, that's why it says, could, this would be a project number two is that possibly the school district number two, is that possibly the school district would do it city-only, that's why we're always there. And that would mean that the number the school would contribute would have to go up by $210,000, $480,000, or $750,000, which would be the amount of private donors, which is the next proposal. And that would be that we would, if the board decided to go in this direction, we would need quite a fundraising effort, I guess, to undertake. And then there is also a number there of annual maintenance, because we don't, if we were to do something like this, we don't want to get in a situation where eight years down the road, when we have to do some resurfacing or whatever, everybody's going, well, where are we going to get this money yet? So the idea was to do some set aside, so we would be truly planning for the future.